Buenos en Hafa Day, the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, and Statistics Research and Planning is calling this virtual public hearing to order. The time is now 9:10 a.m. on Friday, February 5th, 2021. Notice that this morning's virtual hearing is provided via email to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on January 29th, 2021 for the five-day notice and February 3rd for the 48-hour notice, thus meeting the requirements of open government law. I would like to acknowledge my colleagues that are here today. Speaker Theresa Chalhuy, welcome. Senator Joe S. San Augustine, Senator Amanda Shelton, Senator James Moylan, Senator Telo Taitegui, Senator Tony Ada.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Senator Chris Duennius, Senator Joanne Brown. And I believe that rounds up the list of my colleagues as of now. And thank you to everyone that is here today to provide testimony. The purpose of this virtual public hearing is to receive testimony on the following items: Bill Number 16-36, COR, sponsored by Senator Joe S. San Augustine, an act to amend Sections 3123, 3218, 3300, 3413, 3414, and 3433, and to repeal Sections 3428 and 3432, all of Chapter 3, Title 11 Guam Code Annotated, relative to updating and clarifying statutes concerning licensing, sales, and service of alcoholic beverages. The second item is Bill Number 29-36, COR, sponsored by myself, Sabina Flores Perez, co-sponsored by Senator Telo Taitegui. It's an act to add a new chapter, 105, to Division 3 of Title 21 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the creation of a seller disclosure statement to the real estate law. This committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4 p.m. on Thursday, February 11th, 2021. Please address testimony to myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, or it can be dropped off of the mailbox at the Guam Congress Building or emailed to office@senatorparas.org. So the rules of conduct for this virtual hearing is basically that the host will mute all participants until called upon by myself, and virtual backgrounds are not allowed, and participants' face must be visible at all times. When called to speak, please unmute yourself and remember to restate your name. Members of the committee wishing to speak can indicate that they would like to speak. Order of questioning will be starting with the chairperson, vice chairperson, and followed by senators to any of agencies or people on the panel today. Questions and testimony should be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inferences as to character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted, and violations of this general rule conduct would result in removal from the public hearing by a host. So now to begin our agenda. Item number one is Bill Number 16-36, COR, sponsored by Senator Joe S. San Augustine, an act to amend Sections 3123, 3218, 3300, 3413, 3414, and 3433, and repeal Sections 3428 and 3432, all of Chapter 3, Title 11 Guam Code Annotated, relative to updating and clarifying statutes concerning licensing, sales, and service of alcoholic beverages. I would like to now open the floor to the sponsor of this bill, Senator Joe S. San Augustine, to provide introductory remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for introducing the title of the bill. For my colleagues and for the people of Guam, this bill is a reintroduction of legislation I introduced in our last term, and it was Bill 384-35, COR. At the request of several community stakeholders and organizations who serve our island, these groups include Guam Women's Chamber, the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association, the Guam Chamber of Commerce, to name a few. These organizations represent thousands of our island employees in the food, hotel, and service, and tourism industry. Many of these employees, all we know, have been greatly affected by the pandemic, many of whom have seen less work hours and for most, no work. These organizations have worked to find ways to improve service for their patrons and profit. This bill is a way to increase business outcomes, and we must continue to support them. Let us take into mind the struggles that each business and ultimately their employees and families endured over the last 10 months. With this bill, we can continue to support them by ensuring proper protocols and rules are in place for safe sale and service of our island's restaurants and businesses. Again, thank you, Madam Chair, for hearing this bill and for the opportunity to hear the voices of our stakeholders, who I appreciate for coming today. Zuz Masi.
Thank you so much, Senator San Augustine. So now we'll begin our testimonies. The first that has signed up here today is Mary Rhodes from GHRA. So I would like to recognize Ms. Rhodes to provide her testimony.
... and thank you, everybody, for your time and the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 16-36. Thank you again, Chairwoman Senator Sabina Perez, for allowing us to rehear this bill in the 36 Guam Legislature. Bill 16-36 is relative to updating and clarifying statutes concerning the licensing, sales, and service of alcoholic beverages on our island. Bill 16-36 is the first time GHRA, together with Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce and the Guam Chamber of Commerce, have come together to support this initiative and met with several senators during the first hearing in the 35th Guam Legislature and have continued to push for this legislation to be heard and hopefully passed with the 36 Guam Legislature. Our purpose with regard to this legislation is to provide some measure of help to restaurants and bars in order to enable them to increase their revenues, keep their staff employed, and hopefully stay afloat during this pandemic. But we are also hoping that this remains permanent, knowing that we are making several amendments to the ABC laws. We have already seen several restaurants close due to the pandemic, and unfortunately, with our current situation where we're still under quarantine and an emergency declaration, restaurants have continued to remain limited with 50% indoor dining, curbside service, and takeout. Also, alcohol sales have emerged as one of the major ways with beer, wine, or liquor sales staying afloat during COVID-19. During the pandemic, Guam has seen more than 30,000 people affected by layoffs, furloughs, or reduction in employees' hours, according to the Guam Department of Labor. In response to the pandemic and due to the Department of Public Health and Social Services' social distancing requirements, many industries on Guam have been open for curbside service or delivery, including restaurants as well as retail services. Knowing that the future of this industry will grow more and more reliant on takeout and delivery, the restaurant meals of the future and beverage sales will need to travel as well, something that most fine dining and even casual service restaurants will struggle with. Restaurants don't simply always just sell alcohol, obviously it's with food service, and the quick service and fast casual joints are already well-positioned for this new reality. Some of them will consider taking this as a growth opportunity, and some of them will continue to see this as a challenge, especially in full-service restaurants. But even before the crisis, guests have showed a desire for alcohol delivery. According to the National Restaurant Association, 56% of consumers over the age of 21 said they would likely to order alcoholic beverages if they were offered as part of the food delivery order from a restaurant. Online ordering and takeout orders are here to stay. We need to adapt our alcoholic beverage statutes to allow our restaurants to stay in business and also update our ABC laws. Taking advantage of these off-premise sales for alcohol on and on-premise has the potential to be the difference between restaurants that survive and those that don't. It's no question that the pandemic will change a lot of business models forever. As restaurants look to reopen or remain open, they're likely to see fewer people in indoor dining, whether due to enforced occupancy limits or general fear and anxiety because of the pandemic. There are more guests who are looking for a variety of meals and beverages to be served at home. In 2020, we saw 44 states adopt the sale of takeout alcoholic beverages, either temporarily through executive order or permanently through statutes, because research has shown and consumer behavior has shown that the sale of prepackaged or unopened alcoholic beverages along with food items for takeout or delivery has provided some measure of increased revenue for establishments and increased satisfaction with guests. The National Restaurant Association noted in July 2020 that state-level polling indicates support for making the takeout or delivery of alcoholic beverages permanent in between the ranges of 70% to 85% within states. Many of Guam's laws regulating and governing the license sale and handling of alcoholic beverages have not been updated for some time, except for the Responsible Alcohol Server Seller Act. Together with the Guam Women's Chamber and the Guam Chamber of Commerce, we definitely want to see Bill 16-36 passed, where the bill will be able to not just consider changes for our ABC laws, but allow businesses to modernize so that they can really enhance their online ordering, curbside pickup, and delivery services. It's important to note that even with Bill 16-36, all existing laws still apply, such as age regulation, open container laws, DUI, and Responsible Alcohol Server and Seller Act laws. With the passage of Bill 16-36, the bill will allow establishments that currently possess a valid liquor license for on-premise to allow them to sell alcoholic beverages in an unopened, prepackaged, or sealed state for consumers to take out or delivery drivers to take out these items included with food orders. Licenses must have a prominent posting on-premise, online, as well as any way possible to go along with the transport of the beverage that states, "Alcoholic beverages packaged by this establishment are in open containers and may not be transported in a motor vehicle except in the vehicle's trunk, and if there is no trunk, the container may be kept in some other area that is not normally occupied by the driver or passenger. Beverages may not be consumed in any area where open container laws are prohibited." Beverages may not be consumed this way, and so it's very clear that the bill supports this to remain intact, all of their laws. The bill requires the takeout or delivery of alcoholic beverages to be served in the remained unopened, prepackaged, or sealed state. The bill also allows licensee requirements to allow licensee to hold one class of license, either on-premise or off-premise, to host other events like with temporary licenses that are currently allowed. The bill also establishes where delivery drivers or third-party drivers would be required to also take responsible alcohol server seller licenses, and actually GHRA and other trainers for these permit programs have already been working with the ABC Board on providing hybrid classes so that these courses can be allowed to be taken online, as we're currently not allowed to do face-to-face instruction, or at least with limited amounts of people. The bill also eliminates all outdated size limit restrictions on containers of alcohol holding less than an ounce. Cocktails and drink recipes have evolved in the last 50 years. A lot of recipes call for less than an ounce of the type of alcohol or no more than a gallon for mass quantities of a recipe produced. Bill also eliminates the no-stacking provision, which does not allow more than one drink at any one time by an individual. Removing stacking provision allows consumers to purchase a bottle of wine, a bucket of beer, or bottle service at a table with mixers. The bill also allows establishments for those employees who are required to do any training to allow tasting of alcoholic beverages while on duty, but for training only. Previously, the law did not allow for any onsite consumption, but again, clearly, this is just for training. Bill 16-36 does not encourage drinking and driving. As mentioned, all DUI and open container laws still apply. Restaurants and bars have alcoholic beverages that are generally more expensive, and so obviously, this bill does not mean to take care of every type of consumer, but there are some consumers who are interested in increasing those types of purchases with online services or at-home delivery. So recognizing these new kinds of services and the new way during this pandemic and even outside the pandemic in which people purchase items, we want to support businesses to be encouraged to be able to operate safely and responsibly during this time. We believe that the above-mentioned changes in these regulations, proposed regulation changes, would help provide continued guidance for those who are currently licensed with the sale and service of alcoholic beverages on Guam. GHRA also strongly supports and encourages Responsible Alcohol Server Seller Act training so that we can remain responsible and really continue our role in the industry to advocate for all of our businesses and to be responsible for employees and consumers, and then also to ensure compliance. With regard to takeout sales of alcoholic beverages being allowed on Guam, we truly hope that we will continue to update our current laws and modernize them so that businesses will continue to be successful, even with the current challenges that we all have. So we want to thank, on behalf of the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association Board, its membership, and of course, our sister organizations, we want to thank the 36 Guam Legislature and the sponsor of our bill, Senator Joe San Augustine, for introducing this bill, and thank you again, Madam Chairwoman, for reintroducing this in the 36 Guam Legislature.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rhodes, for taking the time to provide testimony in all your efforts, Zuz Masi. I would like to now recognize Laura Cepeda, President of the Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce, for her testimony.
I'm Renee Logi, Executive Director for Guam Women's Chamber. I'll be speaking on behalf of Laura's testimony.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you for the privilege of testifying today in favor of Bill Number 16-36, COR, an act to amend Sections 31, 23, 32, 18, 3300, 34, 13, 34, 14, and 34, 33, and repeal Sections 34, 28, and 34, 32, all of Chapter 3, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to updating and clarifying the status concerning licenses, sales, and service of alcoholic beverages. The COVID-19 pandemic directly resulted in over 31,000 layoffs, furloughs, or reduction in employees' work hours last year, according to the Guam Department of Labor. Tourism has been Guam's main economic driver; therefore, most of these layoffs, furloughs, or reduced work hours have occurred in the service industry. In response to the pandemic and due to the Department of Public Health and Social Services' closure, orders and social distancing requirements, restaurants and most other industries on Guam were only open for curbside pickup or delivery for much of 2020. We have already seen several restaurant closings as a result. Although Guam's COVID-19 infection rate has dropped considerably in recent months, allowing public health to declare that restaurants could open first at 25% capacity and now up to 50% capacity, most Guam eating establishments and their employers are still feeling the huge financial strain of this pandemic. Gaining back 50% of their sales is still only half of what restaurants were pulling in before March of 2020. We know that online ordering and takeout order, curbside pickup orders were a lifeline for many of our island's restaurants last year. We also know that online ordering and pickup and delivery options are here to stay. In fact, just this past week, CBS News reported that the mobile ride company Uber just acquired the alcoholic beverage mobile app delivery service, Drizly, for over $1 billion. U.S. alcohol online sales jumped 53% in April of 2020, according to Nielsen IQ. Fox Business reported that food delivery orders nationwide skyrocketed 67% in March of 2020, and digital restaurant orders jumped 63%. According to a September 2020 Forbes online article, a full 50% of consumers are using curbside more often or much more often than they were prior to the outbreak. It's more convenient, and in our post-pandemic world, which we haven't quite entered yet, many people will still believe it to be a safer option. Guam needs to adapt its alcohol beverage statuses to allow our restaurants to adjust to these options so that they may stay in business, keep their staff employed, and meet the new technological demands in the way consumers are ordering food and drinks. Bill 16-36 represents a unique collaboration between the Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce, the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association, and the Guam Chamber of Commerce. Our purpose with regard to recommending this legislation has been to provide some measure of help to restaurants and bars in order to help them increase their revenues, keep their staff employed, and hopefully continue to stay afloat while we navigate this pandemic. We do thank Senator Joe San Augustine for championing this effort. Bill 16-36 allows for the sale of takeout alcoholic beverages along with a food order from a restaurant or bar that serves any type of food. We strongly believe that this measure will enable restaurants that serve alcoholic beverages to boost their revenues, hopefully enough to keep most of their staff employed until things return to normal, or at least in a post-pandemic normal. According to the industry online magazine, FSR, before the pandemic, most restaurants made about 30% of their revenue from alcohol sales. Alcohol has a long shelf life, and a bar typically requires fewer personnel working behind it than are required to wait tables. Therefore, cocktails, glasses of wine, and even beer served in restaurants yields larger profits for the establishment. Plus, while guests typically order just one meal, they may order more than one drink to accompany their meal. Since the pandemic shutdown began in March 2020, 44 states have adopted the sale of takeout alcoholic beverages, either temporarily through executive order or permanently through statute, because research has shown that the sale of prepackaged or unopened alcoholic beverages along with food items for takeout and/or delivery can provide some measure of increased revenue for establishments and their employees. The National Restaurant Association noted in July 2020 that state-level polling indicated support ranging between 70% and 85%, making the takeout or delivery of alcoholic beverages permanent. Many of Guam's laws and regulations governing the licensing, sale, and handling of alcoholic beverages have not been updated in decades. Therefore, they do not take into consideration training, technological, and sustainability advances in the service industry. These laws also do not consider changes in consumer purchasing behavior with the exponential increase in online ordering, curbside pickup, and delivery service. The GWCC, GHRA, and Guam Chamber worked with Senator San Augustine, Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, and several others, including yourself, Madam Chairwoman, to draft this bill in the previous legislature. We thank Senator San Augustine for reintroducing it and for you giving us this opportunity in legislation and hearing it today. This bill updates, clarifies, or repeals certain sections in Chapter 3 of Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, allowing for the sale of takeout beverage, alcoholic beverages, and updating several alcoholic beverage control rules and regulations. It is important to note that with regard to Bill 16-36, all Guam DUI, age regulation, open container, and Responsible Alcohol Server and Seller Act laws still apply. The mandates are preserved to ensure that takeout alcoholic beverages and those that deliver or serve them comply with all existing laws. This bill enables only establishments that currently possess a valid liquor on-premise license with the ability to sell those alcoholic beverages in an unopened, prepackaged, or sealed state to consumers as takeout or delivery items included with food orders. Licenses must have a prominent posting on the premise, online, on a label, on the beverage themselves, or in any way possible to alert consumers of the person transporting the beverage that states, "Alcoholic beverages packaged by this establishment are open containers and may not be transported in a motor vehicle except in the vehicle's trunk, or if there is no trunk, the container may be kept in some other area of the vehicle that is not normally occupied by the driver or passengers, which does not include a utility compartment or glove compartment. Further, such beverages may not be consumed in any area where open containers are prohibited by law." This bill requires the takeout or delivery alcoholic beverages to be served in an unopened, prepackaged, or sealed state. Sealed state refers to secure lid or cap that does not contain a sipping hole or opening for a straw, or that could otherwise enable consumption without removing the lid or cap. The bill does not specify the type of secure lid or cap, as most establishments have or will have their own method of securing a lid or cap on an alcoholic beverage. This bill includes establishment delivery drivers and third-party delivery drivers in the category of employees allowed to serve alcoholic beverages. Note that the buyer must provide proof of age to the driver in order for the driver to deliver the alcoholic beverages to the buyer, and the driver may be subject to off-premise Responsible Alcohol Server and Seller Act training. The bill changes licensee requirements to allow licensee that holds one class of license, either on-premises license or off-premise licenses, to hold a temporary event for different licensed class. For example, a wine tasting or the event at which a restaurant or distributor is invited to participate. This bill allows also for a corkage fee to be applied for individuals or businesses who bring in their own alcohol with prior permission of the establishment. A lot of the hotels and restaurants are limited to the type of alcohol they serve. Therefore, a corkage fee allows establishments and consumers the flexibility to avail of this option to bring in outside alcohol to be served in an on-premise establishment. Some establishments don't serve alcohol, therefore would not be allowed to charge a corkage fee. Should the establishment approve bringing in outside alcohol, the corkage fee covers providing the stemware and service for pouring. The bill allows for the sale of alcoholic beverages on premises at 7:00 a.m. instead of 8:00 a.m., due to a request by golf courses to allow golfers to purchase alcoholic beverages at the golf course before their 8:00 a.m. tee time. Importantly, this charge will not affect off-premise licensees, such as grocery stores. Off-premise licensees are restricted from selling alcoholic beverages between 2:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m., as per the GCA Title 11, Chapter 3, Section 3417. This bill eliminates outdated size limit restrictions on containers of alcohol holding less than an ounce. Cocktails and drink recipes have evolved in the last 50 years. A lot of recipes call for less than an ounce of a type of alcohol or more than a gallon when mass quantities of recipe are produced. This bill eliminates the no-stacking provision, which does not allow for more than one drink at any one time to an individual. Removing the stacking provision allows consumers to purchase a bottle of wine, bucket of beers, or bottle service at the table with mixers. This bill allows establishment employees who are required to taste alcoholic beverages for training purposes to do so on premises during a training session. Previously, the law did not allow for an onsite consumption in any amount or for any purpose by any employee. To be clear, Bill 16-36 does not encourage drinking where it is prohibited, nor does it encourage drinking irresponsibly in a domestic setting. Also, as previously mentioned, all DUI and open container laws still apply, as they do when a person buys a six-pack of beer or a bottle of alcohol at a grocery store or a mom-and-pop store. The GWCC is also aware that consumption of alcoholic beverages in excess has a correlation to Guam's higher-than-average rate of domestic violence incidents. However, we believe the issues that this bill is attempting to address are completely different. The bill is attempting to bring the indoor restaurant dining experience into the home by way of online ordering and takeout or delivery, in an effort to help the restaurant bring in more revenue and thus be able to stay open and keep its personnel employed. The dynamic of this bill is to allow consumers to purchase for home consumption of favorite alcoholic beverages that a restaurant may offer along with a meal, something that the establishment may have previously only been able to offer in-house. This bill requires that establishments can only sell for takeout or delivery items which are offered on the menu; therefore, a restaurant will not be able to sell a six-pack, 12-pack, or a case of beer. This bill will not put food services establishments in a competition with retail stores for quantity purchases. We believe that the above-mentioned changes in the regulations guiding the licensing, sales, and service of alcoholic beverages on Guam are in line with today's training, technological, sustainability, and consumer ordering advances in the restaurant and bar industry. In supporting this measure, the Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce is trying to keep as many people employed as possible, not only during this pandemic, but into the future as well. As previously mentioned, the technology changes in the way people order from restaurants and other establishments are here to stay. Allowing the takeout sale of alcohol beverages in conjunction with a food order is a flexible way to adapt these difficult times, keep more people working, and adjust to current and future market trends. On behalf of the thousands of businesses and employees struggling to survive during this predictable time in our island's history, thank you for the opportunity to testify in favor of Bill 16-36 today.
Zuz Masi and Ms. Logi for your testimony. I believe we do not have anyone else here today to provide any kind of oral testimony, but we did receive some notice that DRT is going to provide testimony, and also the ABC Board has yet to meet. I believe they'll be meeting on February 10th to deliberate this bill. And I believe we did also reach out to Guam Police Department, the AG's Office, Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, Department of Public Health and Social Service, to provide testimony as well. So being that there are no others here to provide testimony, I would like to open up the floor to questions. We can begin with... So yeah, maybe I could start with some questions. So I know the question that I have is, you know, how rigorous is a system in enforcing underage compliance so that underage drinking does not occur? I think that's one of my biggest concerns when it comes to online purchases, right? You know, identifying and verifying, because it's very different when you're in a restaurant. You can see the effect of alcohol, you know, you can see immediately, and you can, you know, react in kind to prevent any kind of harm to the customer, right? So we don't have that oversight when it comes to curbside pickups or online sales and, you know... you know, who's there to really watch that, you know, considering stacking is being removed? I mean, that's, that's one of the concerns that I have with curbside purchases. And I know the argument was mentioned that the, the cost of these alcoholic beverages are much more expensive, but that doesn't necessarily address, you know, the oversight of responsible seller. And so I, I know ABC Board is not here to provide any testimony because that, that is their, their role, is to assure that this, this has to be addressed. I know we, we have an issue with underage drinking in our community. So that's something that, that is a concern for me. But I do would like to, yeah, provide some time for you to respond, Ms. Rhodes, if you have, if you'd like to respond to that.
Sure. You know, stacking is really an on-premise form of measurement. So that would really only apply to on-premise drinking and consumption. You wouldn't have a stacking law that's applicable to in-home because there's no difference of purchasing the alcohol with off-premise establishments. Stacking doesn't apply there. So stacking is really only for while the person is consuming on-premise, and the server, as well as the manager on duty, and the establishment itself with the owner are all responsible with regards to the consumption. And so that's all built into the Responsible Alcohol Server Seller Act. And so there are fines and penalties already in place with RASA. And so even if stacking were allowable, it's, you still have to manage it. And those responsibilities fall on everybody from the server, manager on duty, the establishment itself, and even down to the owner. And so stacking really is only applicable to on-premise. But with regards to underage drinking, I think that it's the same argument like with even off-premise licensing, right? Everybody is responsible to check ID. And so even if the delivery driver, whether it's a delivery driver from the establishment itself, or those who are going to be interested in applying for that alcohol license, they are required to check ID as well. And so the person, whoever that name is under, who's purchasing the alcohol is responsible for that. And there are penalties for even individuals who give alcohol to minors, and so that would still apply. So even if, let's say, there are complaints about a party next door and let's say the police or the ABC Board, like the compliance officers were to go to a, an event or a party and it's known that somebody had given a minor alcohol, there are consequences for that. And so all of those things are still applicable. And there's no difference between really on, off-premise with regards to checking ID. It still all applies.
All right, thank you. The other thing is liability, right? The liability issue. You know, who is liable when you're purchasing things, for instance, through an Uber? If there is an incident that occurs with the overconsumption of alcohol? And so would that be for the driver? Would that be for the restaurant or for all of the above? That's another question.
Yeah, it still would apply under the RASA, Responsible Alcohol Server Seller Act. Even the driver would be, would have to attend the training, and the, the penalties that are in the ABC statutes would consider them a seller or a server of that. It's, it's really a hybrid. I talked to Chairman Ray Lynette about this, and the hybrid training that we've seen so far, it really recognizes them as both like a seller and server because they are actually reselling it, right? Because they added a delivery fee, and so they're receiving income for that distribution of that alcohol. So they do need to get a hybrid class, and I know I've reached out to our vendor in Minnesota. It's called TIPS, and GCC teaches TAM. And then there's one more trainer, and from what I understand, all three programs that teach the Responsible Alcohol Server Seller Act has a hybrid program for responsible delivery service that recognizes them as a server. So they are responsible for it, and there are liabilities and penalties even in our current statutes under RASA.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rhodes, for your response. So now I'd like to open up the floor to my colleagues for any questions. My vice chair, Speaker Tulaki.
Thank you. I just want to thank those who are given testimony today and on the previous, in the previous hearing on this similar bill in the past legislative term. It's been very informative. My only questions remain for the ABC Board, and they, they had said at the time when they testified last year that they had some legal guidance and that they were okay with the expansion of these on-premise sales of alcohol. And so, yeah, if I'm, I would just, I guess, wait until they're available to ask them their questions. Otherwise, I think the information presented has been very thorough. It's very clear. I'm glad for the extension towards the, the, you know, the drivers and the deliverers so that they will also, you know, be mandated to comply with the statutes. And it, I think if I understand correctly, Mary, maybe you can answer this, that you have the, you've, you've run this proposal by GPD and that they are also, they have no objection to it?
I, I know that the Guam Women's Chamber, members of Guam Women's Chamber spoke to the Guam Police Department as well as even the positions of values group, I believe. I know I've spoken to, you know, Chief Ignacio, and it's, it's really implementing the same things, right? It's, it's not really adding more to them because you're really enforcing the same laws. This is just a really, the only new thing is really the transportation of the alcohol, but it really is open container and all the DUI, all of those are still applicable. And so I don't think it really adds any undue, you know, stress or added amounts of, of things regarding enforcement. I think where it adds is really to the compliance officers at the, at Rev and Tax, where they are going to have an additional thing to look for, you know? So I think between within government, you know, just between Public Health's DEH Division and then the ABC compliance officers, I think that they are probably the two areas that probably need more assistance and getting more staffing with regards to enforcement, because whether we introduce laws or enforce our current ones, I think that it's important that we support those agencies with regards to enforcement and compliance.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. No, no further questions.
Thank you so much, Speaker. Senator Joe St. Augustine, do you have any questions at this time? Or comments?
I prefer it back to be last, and I can close it. After all, there are colleagues who've spoken. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Senator Teloty Tegui, if you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity, and thank you, everyone who's here to testify. It's always good to see you, Mary. You're, you're very thorough when it comes to your testimonies and brought a lot of points, a lot of questions that I had actually in, in to ask or answer. However, you know, I'm still, and, and then I think it was Patrick Nelson, Roxanne Benaventi, those who testified prior. They're not here right now. I think they're not able to make it this morning, but I think they're going to be submitting testimony like they did the last time. And these are individuals for those who, who, senators who, who did not have a chance to see the public hearing on, on the original Bill, Bill thirty-eight, three hundred eighty-four dash thirty-five, which was introduced by Senator St. Augustine again, and it, it's, it's really worthwhile to review the, the tape on that public hearing. It brought a lot of perspective out, and I think some of the changes that were made to this bill, you know, there, it was more thorough, you know, and it was mentioned when Wendy mentioned the part about the prepackaging sealed to consumer, you know, that was specific in the new legislation. However, you know, there's still some issues to be addressed, and, and one of them is like, for instance, minors, those under the legal age gaining access to alcohol beverage. For an example, you have five individuals renting a home, a hotel room, or renting an apartment, and one person of legal age is purchasing alcohol to go. So who checks whether the person delivering the alcohol, the customer's ID would be, of course, the delivery guy, but what about those five individuals who are sitting in the living room waiting for him to, to take the alcohol from the door and go in there and, and provide it to everybody else who might be underage? You know, I mean, is there any way to check those on the premises who, when they deliver it, if they're of drinking age? Things like that. We've got an influx of Marines coming to Guam. You know, and many of them are, are still underage, under the twenty-one drinking age. This gives opportunity for, for them, which is kind of scary, you know, with the influx of Marines coming here. We all want to try and put safety precautions in place. Stores, bars, you know, this also, I think, was it Mr. Nelson who brought up the issue on, you know, these could be purchased at any ABC store, and I think the good chair mentioned some testimony, oh, no, that was the ABC Board, but like some of the other stores coming around to testify on this bill too as well. I think if the good chair could also reach out to those establishments as well and, and provide us some testimony. And again, the speaker mentioned how important it is to hear from the ABC Board, and I, I wish they were here today to answer some questions or, or hear what we have, but, you know, I guess they can review the video. It was mentioned, you know, this whole bill was to help during a time of, you know, need, where the pandemic has, you know, hurt a lot of these businesses. And it, and it's understandable. We, we try to take measures to assist the businesses, which is important. However, in this bill, I didn't see a sunset provision at all. And if, if we go back to normal, right now, we're at fifty percent in, in restaurants. However, they still haven't opened the bars yet, but we're at fifty percent on the restaurants. And, you know, as time moves on, you know, people are getting vaccinated. They're starting to move to a normalcy. Is the intention to, to put a sunset provision in this legislation that once, you know, we go back to normal so that we don't continue this off-premise or, you know, this pickup, alcohol pickup or delivery? So that's, that's a question I have, you know, I hope can be addressed maybe on the floor when we talk about this. Other than that, Madam Chair, I, it's hard to ask anything else without the ABC Board here to make comment and reference moving forward, but I, I surely hope that we can have maybe another public hearing once they've had their meeting, and they can share with us their findings and their concerns. Other than that, thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to ask questions, to make comments.
Thank you so much, Senator Tegui, for your input and participation. So now I would like to open the floor to Senator Joanne Brown. She has any questions at this time?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and certainly to, to the panel that's here to testify on this bill. You know, I, I understand, I think we all understand particularly, you know, just even recently hearing about the situation the theaters are are experiencing, where now they're, they're told they're able to open, and then we're hearing they're not able to serve, you know, popcorn and other types of food and beverages to patrons that want to go to watch a movie, which probably is going to really adversely impact their ability to get people to want to go to the movie theater, because part of going there is having your, your popcorn and maybe your hot dog and, and your, your, your favorite beverage drink. I, I think we understand the, the situation that the bar owners are in. You know, I can imagine to be out of business this long, particularly if you're, you're leasing or renting your facility. And, and I'm wondering, what are your thoughts on how close are we to actually having bars being reopened? Because certainly if the bars are reopened in the near future, it would essentially, there would be a need for this type of legislation. I mean, obviously, we know in our community, as many communities, we have an issue with alcoholism. We have issues with DUI. I had the opportunity once to go and sit in as an observer, you know, Monday morning in one of our, our courtrooms in Superior Court, and was taken aback just the amount of individuals on a Monday morning that are being brought into court, you know, from the weekend collection of DUI in this community. And of course, that's a whole other issue. But I concur with, you know, Senator Tello's concern about how do we, how do we make sure that this doesn't get in the wrong hands? How do we, you know, ensure that people that are purchasing this are not consuming it? And yet, at the other end of the coin, I'm aware you can go into other businesses that do sell alcohol and purchase, you know, your, your favorite beverage or a bottle of wine or other type of liquor that's available, and, and you can take it out of the store and, you know, there's nobody, let's kid ourselves, there's nobody monitoring what happens with this. We can barely keep track with all the other crimes on Guam, so I also appreciate that. But I just wanted feedback and your thoughts, maybe, Mary Rhodes, I know you're working very diligently and very hard to try to ensure that these businesses are getting back on their feet and that they have an opportunity to reopen. But can you give us a sense of where things probably are with regards to that discussion of, of seeing our bars open? And people can, can safely go into their bar and, and be able to, to consume their alcoholic beverage? So we're not worrying about it being taken off-site and to places unknown?
Yes, thank you, Senators Tello, Tegui, and Senator Joanne Brown. I, you know, it's really important that we, this, this happened to be a bill that was introduced to address the takeout alcohol, yes, during the pandemic, but what we did was, especially GHRA, we've been trying to get amendments to the ABC laws for about ten years now. And so all these additional statute changes that we're recommending is really meant to modernize it. And so the reason why there isn't, first, I'm going to just go back to Senator Tello's comment about sunset clauses. We really would like to see this as a permanent change because it updates the laws with regards to some of the things that are very archaic. Outside of RASA, our, our laws have not been updated since, prior to that, since prohibition. So we, we follow California law, and so a lot of those things don't really apply anymore, and those are things that really the ABC Board or the compliance officers really enforce as much because there are a lot of new recipes and a lot of new ways of doing things. So we're really not looking this just for takeout alcohol. This is really to update the ABC amendments first and foremost. Second is the takeout alcohol. I know that's the one that's getting more attention, but it, it's really not just because pandemic, as I said, the National Restaurant Association, fifty-six percent of consumers are interested in takeout dining. That is just the way this new generation is purchasing things, whether they take shared rides, it's a shared economy, right? Shared rides, food to go. They're eating at home more, they're not going out as much. And I think that that's just, that's what we mean when we say modernize or update the laws to recognize the way people are really purchasing. And so we need to really update our laws to recognize those new things that's taking place. With regards to the reopening of bars, I, you know, I was, I did get, the governor's office did reach out to me last week, and then the, the Director of Public Health, Arts and Augustine, last Thursday before Crystal Potgo had mentioned on the news that, you know, they're looking at the reopening of bars. Right now, all it is is really considering the guidelines, the reopening guidelines of how we could do this responsibly. And really, it's no different than the restaurant guidelines. There are a couple of things that they have to take into further consideration, but a lot of the same way of operating the bar is similar to a restaurant with the way, with signage, social distancing, with the way through, you know, modifications of the space to make sure that the tables, the chairs, all of that are regularly sanitized and spaced out so that you are measuring distancing. Also, the way you have your guests enter and exit, and all of the sanitation areas being available. So there's really, there's, there are only a few differences in operating a bar versus a restaurant. There's just been a challenge in getting the bars to reopen because of the gathering concerns, right? That especially with alcohol, where people become, you know, inhibitions, you know, they, they, they don't worry about things as much with that once they start consuming alcohol. But right now, that's what you're seeing in the restaurants. You're seeing still alcohol sales, right? And so you can still do it responsibly, just like the movie theaters. Selling prepackaged foods is not going to further infect or transmit the virus. I think that the movie theaters should be allowed to serve prepackaged foods. Or if they're going to serve popcorn or hot dogs, it should all be individual servings, smaller sizes, and with all packaged condiments. and with all packaged condiments. There's ways to do things without having to control every aspect of it, knowing that everybody is taking all the safety measures to do it responsibly. And I think that that is what we've been talking about with all these suggested amendment changes. Is the language is there, this is done in 44 states, plus also internationally. And although some states have limited it to just the pandemic and they probably do have a sunset clause where it's a temporary measure. A lot of other states or internationally, it's a permanent, it's a permanent change because they recognize that people are changing the way they purchase or consume alcohol. Now, the other thing I wanted to say was, if you think about how much alcohol costs at a restaurant and a bar, people are, those who are going to be consuming at the levels that we're concerned about are not going to be purchasing it at a restaurant or a bar. This is really more about those consumers who want to have specialty drinks or drinks come with their pizza or, you know, it's certain things that go along with the food. Or maybe it's a convenience factor because they are confined to the house or in quarantine or whatever it may be. So it's really just recognizing that people have different situations right now where they are at home more. And I don't, I know that there are concerns that people will use this as an opportunity to consume their beverage and their food while they're on the go. But again, all those laws still apply. I don't think we're trying to introduce something that is going to make things worse. We're trying to improve things, but do it responsibly. And then also requiring that those drivers who do it as a to-go item take those classes and get licensed and they're under the ABC Compliance Division where they are responsible. It'll get revoked if in case they get in trouble. So but consumers who purchase directly, you know, it's like any place. If they purchase at a service station, a C store, or a convenience store, or a grocery store, how do we know what they're doing with those items once they purchase it from 9:00 AM till, you know, till the time that they close? We don't know what they're doing with the alcohol once it leaves the store. But the most important thing is that the businesses know what their responsibilities are. And they show every effort to put those measures in place. That is all we as a government or as a community can ask for. What people do on their own time is really the issue. It's not implementing new laws so we can make alcohol available for to-go services. You know, that comes back down to enforcement and compliance. And I think all the businesses would be willing to comply and do everything that they need to do to really adjust to the changing times. So I think it's an opportunity to actually do more education and outreach with, you know, all the agencies. I know, you know, the Madam Chairwoman invited Behavioral Health as well last time. And so I think that this is an opportunity really more for community outreach and education. Because if we have such a social issue, I don't think takeout alcohol is really going to affect that as much. Because there are opportunities for people to get that alcohol if they wanted to. And I think that this is only going to help streamline things rather than make them worse.
Madam Chair, if I can just ask one quick question? Because if we're not putting a sunset on the ability of a consumer to go into a bar, for example, and take, you know, takeout beverages or purchase beverages and take them out? I mean, so if someone goes to a bar and goes there and drinks for a bit? And then you mean now they would be able to purchase that alcohol and take it out the door with them? Is that what this is saying? Because there is no sunset clause with regards to their ability to purchase alcohol and take it out from the premises? Because that's always been such a concern, not that I have an awful lot of experience, except for campaign fundraisers going to bars on Guam. But that's always seemed to be a concern that you can't go out with your, you know, can't take your beverage out the door with you, that you need to consume it on-site and then you can leave.
Actually, with food, it's only with food to go.
Okay. So if I, okay, so if someone went and was drinking at a bar that evening, they're not able to purchase their specialty drink and get it packaged and walk out the bar with it?
No, it's only for food to go. Alcohol has to be purchased with food to go. That's the qualifying event.
Okay, but, okay, so I'll get some food and I want to get my drink. I'm able to do that after I've maybe been sitting there at the bar for a couple hours and maybe I'm on my fifth shot. What? I just want to get this clear because, I mean, we have to find a balance. Because it's, you know, we are well aware of the problems that we have. And, you know, for a period of time when I was at DPW, I was the governor's representative for the Office of Highway Safety and dealing with the other end of DUI on Guam, which is a significant problem. I mean, when you sit in that courtroom and you see person after person going up there, you're just going, oh, my lord. You know, we have, as we do, a major drug problem on this island right now. And I just don't want to be in a situation where we have someone who's probably already consumed a few drinks. And then now they can take it to go. There's nobody there going to be there at, you know, 12:00 midnight, 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the morning when they're leaving a bar verifying that they're, you know, tucking it into the trunk or the backseat and that they're not consuming it on the way home. And then they reach a certain level, they're already, you know, they're already beyond the accepted limit. So I know for me, that would be a concern if they were there as a patron of that particular bar. And then they're able to purchase more of it on the way out the door. So I just wanted to ask that question and, you know, provide that comment with regards to my concern there. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
If I may just add one more comment, sorry, Chairman. That's where the bartender, the server, and the manager of that premise should be enforcing the responsible alcohol server part, where they should not be serving that person anymore. And they should also make a recommendation that maybe their food to go should only be food or water. And they should not be serving more alcohol to go to a person who is already intoxicated. The intent and the spirit of this part of the bill is really for takeout orders, not while they're consuming on-premise and then leaving. It's really meant for takeout delivery orders.
Well, then perhaps, perhaps we should put a restriction. If you're there consuming at the bar, then maybe you can't purchase and take it with you. I just would be concerned about that because I just see the potential for abuse there. And of course, I would hope every bartender would be responsible and following that requirement. But I don't know, and I know there's not going to be somebody there to police that process. So it's just bringing up what I see would be a concern with regards to that. But thank you very much. Thank you for your input. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Browns, and thank you, Ms. Rhodes, for that response. Now, I'd like to open up the floor to Senator Jim Moylan.
I'm sorry there, Madam Chair. If you had an order, that's fine. I thought you weren't going to allow any more speaking. But was there somebody before me that you wanted to go speak? Go right ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I chose you, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you for the presentation regarding this bill. But the question, we mentioned 44 states. Which states are not participating?
I'd have to go back just to the list and I can provide that later to Senator Moylan.
Oh, okay, that's fine. Can you give me an example? You know, we're talking about the bars, right? But what other establishments would be benefiting from this? Can you give me another example other than the bars? We seem to be focused on that.
Well, again, it's mostly for restaurants or bars who have food to go or restaurants or prepackaged foods. So really, ideally, we're talking about restaurants or even hotels that have services within their facility. Because, you know, when you have an on-premise license, you have to consume it on-premise. But if they have a retail store, right, that's an off-premise. So that's the challenge where ABC has so many class licenses and it's very specific to how they serve and sell. So you're either an on-premise or you're an off-premise. And what we wanted to do with this, when we worked with Senators Augustine on the changes, was we kept it simple by not combining your on- and off-premise license. Because that would make it really complicated, I think. But by allowing on-premise to do takeaway, but with food purchase only. So you can ideally see that really with restaurants and hotel establishments and anyone that, any, you know, any, some store, some other places, like convenience stores, they have like food outlets, like a cafe, and if they happen to sell alcohol as well.
Okay, do me a favor. I'm not saying that you're a potential customer for this, but if you were, and for example, we have several nice pizza places, for example. What would you do if this became law? What kind of consumption, would you be interested in this? If, you know, let's say you are, right? What would you do? You go down to your local pizza place over here, someplace nice? And what would you order and what would you buy? If this was law?
I can answer that. For me, because I've been able to experience this in other states while traveling back in those states. We have lots of wine and I think it's an untapped market for our community right now. I think because of the price of wine. So I think if you were able to go to a place and order your dinner and then you want to try a nice wine, but you're not going to finish it because it's only you and your partner. At the end of the night, you can re-cork that wine and then, you know, seal it correctly and have a copy of your receipt available showing that you did have this wine with dinner but didn't finish it. And then you can take it home and finish it the next day or when you get home, whatever your preference is.
Okay.
But honestly, for me, I would be the consumer. I wouldn't purchase from that. I would go to a store and buy it at a much cheaper rate, right? I don't think you're going to get a lot of people really taking advantage of this. It's crazy what I think Gen Z and millennials purchase. I see how my kids purchase and how they pay for $15 Uber rides, $18 Uber rides, and they eat out. You know, I don't know how they can afford it these days. But I don't think that you're going to see a lot of people. I see this as an opportunity for places like who would make signature drinks. Like, I don't take the time to make like a sangria or probably, I've tried it and I've put too much alcohol. So I'd rather go to a place that is really well-known for it. And I've even talked to like Sarah Mosas, like, hey, what kind of signature drinks would you do? And then maybe, you know, you would buy it in a much larger volume. And that's where it becomes really different because there's even things like, you know, Jun over at Venue, like the kind of signature drinks he makes are like amazing. And so this is an opportunity really create a craft out of this and where bartenders and artisans can really do something different, where they can be entrepreneurs on this. But it's not meant really for the mass consumer who, for me, I wouldn't buy my beer through the pizza place. I would make sure I had the beer somewhere else. And they may not even have the beer I like because they probably only carry two domestic beers and that's it. So it's not really meant for everybody.
And these signature drinks, what's the average price of a signature drink that you recall?
Oh, probably $8 to $12 even for a single glass. So if you're talking the gallon, if that's included in the amendment, you can imagine what that cost would be. I'm sure they're not going to provide it, you know, the 300% markup. But it would definitely be at a, you know, like what everybody has done with, look at how all the restaurants have adjusted. Restaurants you would never think have barbecue platters like Red Lobster. It doesn't even fall in their menu, you know? But everybody's trying to survive and everybody's trying to go with what people like. And so I think that's what would happen with this too, is it's not going to be a free-for-all. I think some businesses don't even want the liability, honestly. They may not even make it available because it's just too much risk for them. And how do they, you know, if it's going to be attached back to them, similar to bars, just because your bartender served the alcohol last, your establishment's still involved. Just because the good, what is it called, good-to-go? Or grab, like if their driver came from there, that establishment's still responsible. So some businesses may not agree to include this as part of their service. You're going to have a very discerning group and it's going to take some time to evolve. But I think the fact that we give people options, but we make all the amendments to the statutes so that it is possible, I think that people will learn how to adjust and be responsible with it.
That's a good point. I find when I have a spirit at one of the restaurants, you know, I could have gotten that beer at the gas station for the price of one, I could have bought a six-pack. So it's a different clientele that you're really focusing on, right? And man, if I bought that beer on base, I could have bought a case for what I paid for at that one beer sitting at the bar. But it's interesting to know. Let me see, I got a question on the court fee. Can walk us through a similar situation? How would, if this became law, how would a customer enjoy or take this law and use it? What would happen? Give me an example.
Mary is pointing to me, okay. Well, and currently, as you may or may not know, we don't have a corkage fee. So technically, you are not allowed to bring any outside wine or beverage into an existing establishment. But yet, that is already happening. So right now, it's just kind of helping us to get compliant to make sure that both the customer and the establishment are both following the rules of the ABC Code. One example would be you want to go have a, you know, family dinner and maybe somebody gifted you a really nice bottle of wine from out of state that you know is not available online or on island, so you want to bring that there. That would be one option. And again, it's also communicating with the restaurant in advance to make sure, hey, I want to be able to bring this wine in. Can I? And do you charge a corkage fee? Again, this is not something that all restaurants need to do or comply with. It would be up to that establishment. Additionally, when you do have specific events and maybe you get donated items like to you, you want to be able to have like a case of wine that was donated by a vendor or somebody without, and then being charged a corkage fee without having to, you know, go through the direct restaurant? If that's something they don't carry or don't work with that vendor for whatever reason? Does anything else you want to add on that part, Mary?
Yeah, just two things. Corkage fee, just for those who might remember, although Renee is the executive director for Guam Women's Chamber, she's also GHRA's Food and Beverage Chairperson. She's been on Guam for a while and she's been one of our leaders in the industry for FNB. But corkage fee also addresses two things. The reason why there is a fee is because people can't bring in alcohol to an establishment that has an on-premise license because the on-premise requires that the establishment is responsible for that alcohol. So that's why you would charge a corkage fee. Also, there's service behind that because people can't just pour their own drinks when you go to a restaurant or a hotel or wherever. That establishment is still taking responsibility and liability for that alcohol while being served on-premise. So that's why the corkage fee would apply. We used to have corkage fee, by the way, and so they used to charge for that. But the individuals, the servers with the license are required to pour that. And you can't just like leave it on your table and pour willingly according to whoever you want on your table. It still has to be managed responsibly by the establishment and the servers. So that is the purpose of corkage fee is to control it, but also to charge a service fee for that service. Because you're not only having somebody pour it and manage it, but you're also using all of their barware and things like that. So that's why we would just like to bring that back in.
Okay, so if they have no liquor license or on-sale premise license, are they allowed, are they allowed or not allowed to have a court fee?
No, you're not supposed to charge a corkage fee, but you're also not supposed to drink alcohol on a premise if they do not have a liquor license. So you can't bring alcohol into a cafe or a breakfast place that doesn't have a liquor license.
Okay, could I bring my Egle, if the establishment has the court fee? Can I bring my Ego Cooler with a six-pack of beer in it and pop my can while I eat my Chinese food at the restaurant?
No, you cannot.
Okay, and what's an average court fee cost?
It's usually a percentage. Sometimes it could be a flat rate depending on the establishment. Some establishments might waive it altogether depending on how big your party group is. Again, it's not a requirement. It's something that is a tool, like a fee that can be assessed if the establishment wants to do it. It's an option at least.
Okay, okay, pretty interesting. I appreciate the examples given. But it seems like these customers who would avail to this if this became law are going to have to reach deep into their pockets because it's kind of costly of what they're purchasing. We're not going to be bringing in Boone's Farm into the, to the fine dining and restaurant place or ordering Boone's Farm, you know, $6 bottle of whiskey or something like that. You know, I can get Um, you know, six-dollar bottle of, uh, whiskey or something like that, you know, I can get that at the local store. But why would I pay a high dollar price when I can get that at the gas station or some drive on the way home when I might pick up my, uh, uh, chicken to, uh, was it prepared chicken or some fried chicken and, and then go home and stop by the local gas station and get a six-pack there. But I appreciate, thank you for the information. It's very helpful. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Uh, Senator Tony Ada, if you have any questions at this time.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I sure do. Uh, probably this could be for Mary. Or, um, you know, prior to last year, when was the last time a bill was introduced to try to amend the law?
I, I think the last time was probably with Senator Rodriguez when he introduced the Responsible Alcohol Server Seller Act. Was the last time, um, they tried to amend the law. Um, we have been trying to get the changes to the statutes through the ABC Board. Um, and we had, and actually, uh, Senator Sinagastin was working for, um, the division at that time when we tried to make those changes. We had many meetings with them. Um, but I can't remember another time when they tried to, or were successfully able to um, just, you know, uh, change the statutes to the Guam Code annotated.
I see, so, and you know, I hope you don't take this any other way, but are we just trying to use the pandemic to, how do we say, speed up the process or to, um, see what we can do to pass laws that, uh, should take a, a different route? I mean, because yesterday we were in a, in a hearing as well, and I'll give you an example. Uh, they're trying to change the law for temporary workers' housing because of the pandemic. And then I was reading the, the legislative findings here and it's the same thing because a result of the pandemic. Here we are trying to change the law. So are we just using the pandemic to change laws and make things easier?
No, I actually provided copies of our letters to the ABC Board, um, that we've been providing since two thousand and seven for these, uh, ABC amendments. And so we've actually been working really hard as a committee, uh, within GHRA to suggest these changes um, to adjust to the times. I think that, um, the only thing again regarding the pandemic is to address, um, takeout delivery because it has increased. And so, um, that just is a sign of times though, as I stated earlier. Even prior to the pandemic, we've seen takeout deliveries and requests for, um, alcohol to go take place in, really rise even prior to the pandemic. And I think that's mostly because of the Gen Z millennials, the gig economy and the shared economy, um, industries that have completely grown in the last five years. And so I think it's just really the sign of the times, not related to the pandemic. The pandemic is only just highlighting it. Um, but this has been a moving, a, a force that has been taking, come, uh, going on with the restaurant industry for some time now.
Yeah, and that's why I asked, when was the last time any, and, uh, legislation was introduced or, you know, moved by, a, a movement by the GHRA or anyone else to, uh, change the, the, um, the laws, right, uh, consider, uh, concerning, uh, alcohol sales?
Yeah, I think, I think what's really great is that we do have Responsible Alcohol Server Seller Act in place because it makes these kinds of changes much more palatable because we already have, um, you know, the, the penalties and responsibilities, the training, the licensing all required already. So it's much easier to implement changes to the law because we already have the enforcement side and compliance side and the training and licensing done. Um, and so I think that any, any further changes really only improves on that. So I think Senator Sinagastin wanted to add to that because, like I said, he did work there before. Not sure.
Yeah, so that's why I was just asking and, uh, maybe if, uh, if the author of the bill, Madam Chair, has any, uh, input to what, uh, Ms. Rhodes was saying?
Yes, um, as, for, for my colleagues, um, for some of you that have been in the legislature before me, uh, while you were in the legislature, I was at the ABC Board. There are many issues that were brought up by the, by GHRA, by, by all the businesses. And the ABC Board was, has been trying to figure out how to wait, how to get this introduced. But we ran into, um, all the reasons for why it wasn't brought up. And whatever excuse there is, we move with the time. As far as the pandemic, coincidentally, the, um, the serving with, uh, with food happens to work in line with the pandemic. It is something that, um, and, and Senator Moylan brought it up, uh, you're going to have to have a, a nice, I guess, a nice wallet to buy this. Well, you know, you're not in that category and there's many out there that are in that category that will spend a lot of money to get their specialty drink with their meal. And many of us probably here won't do this, but, uh, there are a lot out there that will do that. And, and with that, it's not about the pandemic, uh, my colleagues and Senator Ada. Tony, uh, it's not, it, it just happens to be then. And, uh, and I will be working with GHRA and the Guam Women's Chamber and, and the other businesses. There are many other, uh, I've got a couple of bills that are becoming up, a reference to the ABC. We're going to do some updates and, and we're going to move from there. And then it'll, it'll be your call to decide on, on which direction you want to go. All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, thank you, Senator Sinagastin. I appreciate that. And I think that, that's what, uh, you know, my concern was, was the pandemic is we're just, uh, introducing or, uh, having, uh, you know, the, the legislative finding says because of the pandemic and that's why we need to take this route, uh, knowing that, uh, you have other pieces of legislation there to update the, uh, ABC, uh, code. I look forward to that, um. Mr. Sinagastin, my brother, and, uh, we'll continue on then. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, for this opportunity.
Please, Moise, Senator Ada. Uh, Senator Duñez, uh, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I would like to thank Mary Rhodes, uh, a- and as well as the representative from, uh, uh, the Women's Chamber for a very thorough, uh, presentation. Um, many of us have traveled through Hawaii and, um, when we're at the airport, um, I think they tried to make us feel very young because they asked for our ID even though I've obviously am of age to drink. The reason why I bring this up is the issue of, of, uh, underage consumption and just that possibility of, of that issue. Um, you know, Mary, do you think it would be a nuisance to, uh, to put a requirement on, on these deliveries for one hundred percent ID check?
Sorry, um, it's already required for a hundred percent ID check by law.
Okay, but what I mean is like mandated, you know how it is, like I, you, I'm sure you've traveled through Honolulu and you're sitting there and, uh, even somebody like me, they would say, I, I need to see your ID.
Yeah, but, so it, it's already required for any purchase of alcohol to require ID. So it, the establishments just need to do it every time. Same with off-premise. They have to check ID every time. It's their choice to not do it if they're not implementing that at each purchase, but the law already requires checking ID.
So you're just saying leaving it discretionary is not, not a big deal?
No, I mean, if you want to add in that language of mandatory ID check, I mean, I think it already states that in the public law of any alcohol purchase or consumption needs to be of those of twenty-one years of age. Um, I'd have to double-check what the statute specifically says with regards to ID. If it is already mandated, but I'm assume, I, I, I'd have to check the language. Um, and then, um, so what I'm saying is I believe it's already mandatory.
Okay.
It's up to the establishment if they're going to do it every time.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it. I, I think it might be something, uh, we'll look at and, uh, just because like you said, uh, there are many of our, our, our millennial folks that, uh, either they have very generous parents or, or, or for some reason, uh, they're very entrepreneurial and, and, and have had have discretionary income. So, uh, I just think just for that, uh, that one added, uh, um, you know, safety, uh, safety valve there for, for this issue, I, I'm, I'm going to work with the chairman and see if it's something that would, like I said, either be an unneeded nuisance or something that, uh, might just make the bill a little stronger. So, once again, I thank you for a very thorough presentation and I'm, I'm, I'm very supportive of this effort. I think it's, uh, uh, something that's needed. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Senator Duñez.
Uh, thank you, Senator Duñez, and, uh, just one more question before I, uh, open the floor to, uh, Senator Sinagastin for closing. So this question's from Mary, um, so would this off-premise license, um, be available for food trucks as well? Do you, do you see that happening for food trucks?
So food trucks is not, wouldn't be off-premise because, um, they would have to probably apply for an on-premise. So similar to food trucks where they, um, you can consume right on-site or to-go, um. I don't, I don't know that answer, how the ABC Board would license food trucks because I don't know what license they would apply for. Cause right now, for example, like there is a specific class license for limousines where you can specifically drink inside a limousine, um. So I don't know how, because food trucks are mobile, um, and it's not a guarantee that they're going to drink on-premise. So if they had an on-premise license, they would have to ensure that, um, there's a, it's like an area that's closed off where they can only drink while there. And so they'd have to rope it off wherever their seating area is and that would be, so they, they'd have to submit a proposal basically to the ABC Board to show how they would control the drinking while on-site and then responsibly serve it, should it be for to-go. Um, so I think that's also something that's kind of, uh, hasn't been mentioned here is for every applicant who intends to sell alcohol, those, um, applications go directly to the ABC Board. And the ABC Board reviews everything in their plan with how they're going to serve and distribute alcohol, whether you're on or off-premise or different class license like limousines. They, they have to see it in your plan. So if they're going to allow food trucks to have an on-premise license with to-go, they'd have to see how they're going to manage that. Um, because right now food trucks, they, they, I don't know of a food truck that has an on-premise, but that can be done if it's, if, if they do apply for an on-premise. There isn't, um, I guess what I'm saying is there isn't an exclusion to food trucks. They would be treated like a restaurant, basically.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rhodes. Uh, so now, uh, I'd like to offer the floor to Senator Sinagastin, the sponsor of this bill, for closing.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair, and, and, and in reference to the question about the food trucks being, because I, I used to work there at revenue and tax. Uh, as they go to the process of getting any license, I think they'd be very mindful, but the process is not as easy as they think it may be. It's not something that the food truck guy is going to go, I had to get an ABC license. But there, there's a lot of issues they need to settle before they go in there. But then again, thank you again, Madam Chair, for hearing Bill sixteen dash thirty-six. And to all who joined us today as stakeholders in our process to build capacity for island businesses during this time. And even beyond the pandemic. It definitely shows that there's much to do in supporting our island business and in paying your hard-working and dedicated employees and families. Madam Chair, it's evident in the testimony here today that we need to pass, hopefully passes, everyone gets to the floor. And if there's any amendment, uh, I do not intend to, uh, to, uh, advocate for any sunset. This is something, the pandemic has changed the way we do business. Folks, we're going to continue to see takeouts. Where it's not going to change, it actually is going to increase. People are feeling more comfortable after ten months, eleven, twelve months of not eating in restaurants. Um, and that's just the way the world, they, you know, everything is evolving. And as we work together and addressing the different issues that we need to do and, uh, and then we get this bill on the floor and then we discuss it then and then vote on it. Thank you very much for your attendance today.
All right, thank you, Senator Sinagastin. So Bill number sixteen dash thirty-six COR is now duly heard. And, but we still will accept testimonies, um. We still accept testimonies, uh, by four P M. Thursday, February eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Okay, now on to the next agenda item. So for those that were here for this bill, uh, only, you, you feel free to, to, um, to leave the, the public hearing room. Thank you so much for being here. All right, so now moving on to the next item, Bill number twenty-nine dash thirty-six COR. Sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez and co-sponsored by Senator Telo T. Taitegui. It's an act to add a new chapter, one oh-five to Division Three of Title Twenty-One Guam Code Annotated relative to the creation of the seller disclosure statement to the real estate dealer's law. So I would like to provide some opening comments, um, prior to receiving testimony. And thank you for those that have stayed on to, to, um, for this, to hear this bill or to provide testimony for this bill. So Bill twenty-nine dash, Bill twenty-nine dash thirty-six seeks to curate and mandate a seller's disclosure statement presented to potential buyers of residential properties. By adding the seller's disclosure statement mandate to law, Bill twenty-nine aims to protect potential buyers for, from unforeseen problems and costs and create a fair real, real estate market and more transparent purchasing process for residential property buyers. Bill twenty-nine dash thirty-six is the culmination of the efforts of the Guam Real Estate Commission, which sought input from key stakeholders over several years. Currently in Guam, residential properties are sold as-is, which can potentially leave home buyers with unexpected unbudgeted costs, create an unlevel playing field within the real, real estate market, reduce home values due to the perception and uncertainty of potential material defects and increase liability for brokers who may not know and who do not disclose material defects of properties. Bill twenty-nine dash thirty-six requires sellers of residential real, real properties to provide a seller disclosure statement that fully discloses all material facts present and past and present relating to the residential real property being offered for sale that are within the knowledge or control of the seller and can be observed from visible accessible areas. The material facts are to include but not limited to the condition, presence or type of the following: electrical, plumbing, sewer, septic, cooling and water and wastewater systems, land, structural, environmental conditions, infestation, fungi or mold, equipment and appliances included in the sale, legal issues affecting title, stigmatized events and others. This applies to condo units only with respect to their unit only. A seller's disclosure statement shall not be construed as a substitute for any expert inspection, professional advice or warranty that the buyer may wish to obtain. Conversely, any expert inspection report shall not substitute a seller's disclosure statement. Bill twenty-nine dash thirty-six would require the seller's disclosure to be delivered no later than ten days from the acceptance of the purchase contract. Upon receipt, the buyer has ten days to examine the statement and either accept or proceed or reject and rescind the purchase contract. Other provisions in the bill is the statute of limitations of one year. If the buyer received the disclosure statement in two years, if no disclose, disclosure statement was provided. It's surprising to find that our local laws don't have existing protections for residential buyers. Navigating the purchasing process for the first time is difficult. I can imagine that, that the difficulty of navigating this process and only define structural or electrical issues in their new home after moving in. Uh, with the current state of our island, every penny, penny in our pocket counts. Unforeseen circumstances affecting the structural integrity of a home or plumbing or electrical can be devastating to potential home buyers. Bill twenty-nine would satisfy the need for transparency in order for buyer to fairly consider purchasing a home. It creates a level playing field for all parties, including a residential real estate transaction and, and a residential real estate transaction. Purchasing a home is a significantly large purchase and one of the most important investments for families. And this legislation is a step in the right direction by helping our people to avoid potentially bad purchases. Um, so now I'd like to offer the floor to those that have testified here today. Um, I'd like to welcome Chris Murphy from the Real Estate Commission. Uh, first, if you can unmute yourself. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Hoffaday, good morning, distinguished senators. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I hope everyone's doing well. Uh, my name's Chris Murphy. I'm the owner and principal broker of the Real Estate Professionals and I also serve as the chairman to the Real State Commission. And I'm, I'm here today to, um, strongly express the commission's support of Bill twenty-nine dash thirty-six. Unlike almost every other jurisdiction throughout the United States, Guam does not have any consumer protection laws related to the seller disclosure on transactions involving the sale of residential, uh, property. A Guam real estate seller disclosure law is long overdue and will create a more level playing field among buyers and sellers of residential real estate within our island community. As the real estate industry continues to mature, develop and adapt to conditions surrounding the COVID-nineteen pandemic, a seller's disclosure law becomes increasingly important and essential to protecting buyers who are unable to personally inspect properties or must work on a virtual basis to purchase a home. The concept of homeownership as part of the American dream is very much alive and well. Our island community has deep roots in the land and we understand that homeownership is a cornerstone to a strong community. It is imperative that we as a community continue to encourage, develop and protect opportunities for homeowners- It is imperative that we as a community continue to encourage, develop and protect opportunities for homeownership. Which in turn will improve the overall quality of life for all our residents. Purchasing a home is probably the largest investment the average person will make during his or her lifetime. And if you are like many of us. You may not be a real estate expert. With the ability to ensure that you're getting the best possible deal. In fact, unlike the majority of jurisdictions throughout the United States. Guam real estate transactions are based on the concept of caveat emptor. Or let the buyer beware. This concept places an undue burden on prospective buyers who may not be real estate experts. To conduct their own detailed inspections and investigations of property they are considering to buy. Without the benefit of firsthand knowledge of the seller. Residential real estate contracts are typically, typically employ the concept of caveat emptor. By including the phrase sold as is. Which in the seller's mind relieves him or her from acknowledging, addressing or fixing. Material defects or issues associated with the property they are selling. Just think for a moment. You are a first time buyer and you have saved every nickel and dime so that you can make the necessary down payment on your dream home. The owner is aware of a structural defect in the roof. But the sales contract states that the house is being sold as is. The house looks okay to you, so you close and move in. One month later, during a heavy rain, the roof starts leaking above your living room. You have a contractor come out the next day to look at the roof. He tells you there is a major structural problem that will cost thirty thousand dollars to repair. You don't have the money needed for the repairs and you call the seller, if they're still around. To ask them why they didn't tell you about the crack in the roof. And they indicated, sorry, we sold it as is. What started out to be a lifelong dream is now turned into extended and costly nightmare. By no means am I stating that all sellers are deceptive or try to sell their homes without disclosing material facts. However, the lack of a seller's disclosure law provides the opportunity to do so. And the general public should be provided with the necessary safeguards. To avoid this scenario from ever happening when they are ready to purchase their home. The central focus of this proposed law is a requirement that all owners disclose any material factor defect. Associated with the property they're selling. The key being that the material fact or defect is within the knowledge or control of the seller. And that said fact or defect can be observed from visible accessible areas. The law defines a material fact or defect as any fact or defect or condition, past or present. That would have an adverse impact on the perceived value of the property being sold. The most appropriate way to promote a level playing field in the buying and selling of residential, excuse me, property. Is through the adoption of a seller's disclosure law. A well drafted seller's disclosure law will address several aspects of the typical residential real estate transaction. First and foremost, it will protect the general public from unscrupulous sellers. Who try to hide material defects or issues affecting the property they are selling. Second, it will provide potential buyers with appropriate and meaningful information. On the residential property they are considering to purchase. This in turn will allow the buyer to become more informed and speed up the overall sales process by providing key information. Upfront and early in the transaction. Third, a seller's disclosure law will provide real estate licensees and owners. With an excellent marketing tool to help sell their property in a timely and professional manner. It will allow the seller to sell property on an as is basis, subject to disclosed material facts and information. And finally, it will reduce the liability of real estate licensees. Who represent owners that try to hide or mislead prospective buyers with respect to material issues. Affecting the property that's being negotiated for sale. One might say the disclosure law puts an undue hardship on a seller to disclose information on their property. The proposed law does not require the seller to hire third party professionals. Or spend money on locating or researching possible material facts that are currently not visible or unknown to the seller. It merely requires the owner disclose any material fact, past or present, that they are actually aware of. So in summary, a seller's disclosure law would serve both the buyer and the seller in a transaction. By giving the buyer needed information to make an informed decision on whether or not to purchase a property. And strengthen the seller's sale on an as is basis by disclosing material information to the buyer. That the buyer cannot later dispute. A seller's disclosure law is not meant to replace any expert inspection or professional advice a buyer may wish to obtain. But it does provide the buyer with important information early on in the home buying process. That may or may not affect his or her decision to purchase the property. I appreciate the time and your consideration with this bill. We need to ensure that all of our island residents are provided with the necessary information. To make informed decisions on the biggest investment they will make during their lifetimes. This approval will go a long way to ensure that this becomes a reality in the future. And I'm open to any questions. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Uh, thank you Chairman Murphy uh for all your efforts uh in, in spearheading this effort. And for your taking the time again. I know we introduced this last term. And we did have a public hearing, um, but yeah, so it's been introduced and thank you for your time again. Uh, so now we have um, uh, legal counsel Marcel Johnson. Who's also on the Real Estate Commission to, here to provide testimony on Bill twenty nine dash thirty six. Uh, you have the floor. Uh, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, good morning, Madam Senator. Thank you um to the other senators for letting me speak here this morning. Um, I'm a lawyer, I'm a lawyer at Blair Sterling Johnson and Martinez, and I'm also a member. Of the Real Estate Commission, specifically the one lawyer member. Um, I want to make it clear that I believe real estate disclosure laws are a good thing. And I think we should have a real estate disclosure law on Guam. However, I don't think we should have this real estate disclosure law. This bill takes two different laws from two different states and combines them into one law for Guam. Without considering that each state's law has designed, was designed to require different types of disclosures. Laws are always written so that every part serves the whole. Cherry picking pieces from two or more laws and combining them will not always have a good result. I ask that you avoid making that mistake here. I want to discuss the standards for which, for what must be disclosed in this bill. The term material fact is borrowed from Hawaii statute. The term material defect is borrowed from a Pennsylvania statute. Hawaii law requires the disclosure of material facts. This is a term that has gained specific legal meaning in Hawaii, both because of how it is termed in the statute. And because of how it's been applied by Hawaii courts. The same applies to the Pennsylvania term, material defects. The proposed Guam statute uses both definitions and treats them as interchangeable, which they clearly are not. If you look at the statute itself, the very first section on definitions. Defines material facts in one way, defines material defects in another way. If you look in the definition for material facts, it also includes the word defect in there. If you look throughout the rest of the statute, these two words are used back and forth in different ways. This is not the way you need to draft a bill. Um, I also want to point out that the other definition, which is, I think it's the last one, definition K in the first section, for stigmatized property. While that term is defined in the statute, it's never actually used in the statute. Uh, this definition is taken from a real estate manual as far as I can take it. And that is a very poorly worded definition even from that manual. Properties are considered stigmatized if they're the scene of a murder, a suicide. A serious crime involving drug activity, proximity to registered sex offenders. And lastly, haunting and other paranormal activity. One would expect that this bill would require sellers to disclose if something like that happened on their property. However, since the term stigmatized property is never used in this bill. There is no requirement in this statute that anybody disclose any stigmatizing. Uh, stigmatized property events. I want to make sure there's the term stigmatizing event is used. However, judges and courts are also literal in their interpretation of laws. And so stigmatizing event later on in the statute is the same as the term stigmatized property used earlier on. This is also important because the bill requires the seller to disclose, um. It does not address what happens if a stigmatized event is not disclosed. The section's addressing what happens when a disclosure is not made, only address material facts. And material defects. They don't affect even the stigmatized events that they discussed in this bill discusses at one point. Now, as I said earlier, I agree with requiring disclosures, but I believe that such a law should be clear. Uh, if you look at the definition of what a material fact is, I mean, again, this is taken from Hawaii law. Material fact is any fact, defect or contingent. Past or present, which would make, which would be expected to measurably affect the value to a reasonable person. Of the residential real property being offered for sale. Now, if the point here is to try to create a law that requires certain disclosures that buyers would be aware of. And that sellers would be aware of, but they're required to disclose to the other party. That definition is pretty obtuse. Any lawyer could look at that and say that could be interpreted in many different ways. I think it would be perhaps wiser if we were to put together a real estate disclosure law on Guam that specifically addresses that buyers should. Oh, sorry, that sellers should disclose, say, X, Y and Z things. That um the legislature has decided are important to be disclosed to a seller, I'm sorry, to a buyer. Um, having a definition like this, especially a difference, definition like this that contradicts another definition in the statute only serves. To create a confusing law that would confuse people and probably just lead to litigation after disclosures. After people claim that disclosures should have been made and claim that they were material facts when other, when that's really up for dispute between the two parties. It would be much easier to simply say include that list. That I think Senator Perez mentioned earlier, which is in. The post section one oh five, one oh seven. That specifically lists things that would be disclosed. Uh, however, including the terms material fact and material defect from other jurisdictions. And then kind of mixing them together and using them. And uh, and basically, using them as interchangeable only serves to muddle the waters and make this a very confusing bill to enforce. Um, with respect to the stigmatized property issue, I would only ask that the legislature take into account if they want to include. A requirement that um. That uh sellers disclose these issues of stigmatized property. That they take into account the fact that only three jurisdictions within the United States actually require. Anything like this be disclosed to a buyer. Uh, those three jurisdictions are Alaska, California and South Dakota. Now Alaska requires that a listing agent, not the seller, but the listing agent disclose if a murder or suicide occurred on the property, but only within the last year. California requires that a homeowner disclose if an occupant died within the past three years. South Dakota requires that the seller disclose if a homicide, suicide or felony occurred in the property in the last year. Those are the only three states that I've found that include mandatory disclosures of murders or suicides or deaths on the property. And it's also important to point out that each one of those states limits the amount of time that is required. Uh, as I mentioned, Alaska's with one year. California's for three years and South Dakota's for one year. This statute contains no um closure on that. Okay, so basically if somebody were to have died in your house. And in your house fifty years ago or a hundred years ago, you would be required to disclose that to the buyer if you are aware of that suicide. Um, and I should point out that the research that I've done on this at least means. It says that specifically in South Dakota, one issue that was taken into account with respect to that was the fact that if you require disclosures over a huge period of time, you would. Basically wind up destroying property values. Also, lastly, with respect to um a haunting and other paranormal activity requirement, this, I believe, should certainly be removed from the bill. But because hauntings and paranormal activities haven't been scientifically proven to exist. A seller of a home should not be held liable for failing to disclose something that has not been proven to exist, like hauntings or paranormal activities. No other state has such a requirement in its statute and it's pretty easy to understand why. I believe if the Guam legislature were to pass a law requiring sellers of real property. Or homes to disclose that houses haunted or disclose other paranormal activity. This would probably be taken up in the news in a bad way and reflect poorly on Guam, Guam's real estate community and the Guam legislature. I should also mention that uh Guam law already allows buyers to sue sellers who lied to them about the condition of their property. If a buyer's real estate broker is doing their job, they should ask about specific conditions of the property that must be of concern to them. Or their buyer. They could even have a checklist of things that they always ask just in case. If the seller lies about the condition of that property or to sell the property, that is fraud and that is actionable. And the buyer can sell, a sell, can sue a seller for lying about the condition of that property. One thing I should point out though too is that Hawaii statute relies on this term material fact. Um, and the real estate community in Hawaii has, I think, responded by creating their own checklist of what things should be looked into. And even though people generally don't believe that. A death would fall into the definition of a material fact, they include checklist for all buyers to use when buying real property. That includes whether a death or a suicide has happened on the property. There is nothing stopping uh real estate salespeople or real estate brokers on Guam from adopting a similar list. Um, now there's one last thing that concerns me about this bill. And that has to do with the fact that it was reviewed by the Real Estate Commission, which is responsible for regulating the practice of real estate sales. This bill specifically excludes real estate salespeople and brokers. From liability for failing to disclose material facts or defects. This means that the seller, who is most likely going to be assisted by a salesperson or broker. Takes on all liability for mandatory disclosures. And that sales, and the salesperson or the sales broker takes on absolutely no liability. Something that they, you know, that a real estate salesperson would definitely have an incentive to do. Is to withhold certain information from a buyer in order to make a sale. Even worse, the same real estate salespeople and brokers generally advertise their services specifically based on their knowledge of the Guam real estate market. They need. For failing to disclose the information that they have. As Mr. Murphy mentioned, we're talking about real estate experts here. Not anybody else is a real estate expert. Well, sorry, um, generally sellers of houses. Houses are not generally real estate experts themselves. So we need to impose some sort of liability on the people who are the real estate experts. We're going to impose liability on them. Thank you. Uh, thank you for your time and I also welcome any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Attorney Johnson. So I guess, yeah, the question I have for um, uh Chairman Murphy. Uh, as regards to. Yeah, was the. I guess when you created this bill, I know, um, you know, Attorney Johnson, you, when did you join the, the commission? The real estate.
I joined, I think it was um towards the end of twenty nineteen, but because of COVID, we really haven't had that many meetings. So there's one meeting early in twenty twenty, but I was off island for a funeral, so I was unable to attend that meeting.
Okay, and so, um, you know. When did you first see this bill? Uh, and I guess was there, you know, was there um opportunity to, to provide or change, amend the bill? I mean, I, I do want your input as far as, you know, helping to amend the bill further. To address the terms that you have. And especially, you know, with the um, the change in the fact, the material fact and material defect. So, um. You know, uh, yeah, just basically make it more consistent with which, which one are we referring to? Um, and in regards to stigmatized property, I think, yeah, that's definitely something that I'm not attached to and we could definitely. Uh, pare it down to, you know, perhaps the one year, you know, similar to what Alaska has. But, um. Yeah, just, um, yeah, I definitely would like to reach out to you to see we can, you know, kind of uh fix some of these issues. Okay, um. So I guess this question's for Chairman Murphy, Chris. So regards to some of the things that were mentioned, um, you know, regards to brokers and sellers. Um, being also liable. Is this, um. Was this something that was a, a addressed or early on in the discussion?
Well, I, I, I believe that, you know, a, a broker is a direct agent. They work for. You know, their principal, which is, is the seller. So um, they're, they're responsible. For relaying information provided to them by the seller. And if they knowingly um provide information to a buyer or a buyer's representative. Knowingly that it's wrong. Then that they, they should be absolutely liable. So this, this bill was, there was no way intent for this bill to let. Brokers off the hook. But um, what it does is it, it in some sense lets them off the hook. If they are acting in good faith on behalf of. A principal and they are totally unaware of the principal lying. So, so every, everything that happens, if, 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 if it's something that they relay in good faith. That they were totally unaware of, then it relieves them from responsibility. But if they knowingly know something, then they're, they're, they're equally responsible.
So do you have any objections to, um, you know, changing the, or at least strengthening that part of it? So.
Yeah, I, I personally thought it was covered in there, but I have absolutely no problem. In terms of, of strengthening it or, or redefining how it's, it's put in, but I don't, I don't want to. The whole purpose of this bill is to improve. And set this higher for real estate on Guam. So I don't want to give. Real estate professionals carte blanche to just be frivolous and uncaring of, of their profession. So they, they need to be equally responsible for making sure that people are informed properly.
Okay, so and are you amenable to any of the amendments brought up by Attorney Johnson in regards to. Uh, the definitions or the use of material fact? in regards to the definitions or the use of material fact, material defect?
If he wants to redefine them in their own more, that's fine with me. He was not on board when we started this, this journey. So it was just during the last meeting that this came up. So I have no problems working with him now to, if he feels it's appropriate to, you know, make them more concise in their interpretation or definition, that's fine.
Okay, great. And the stigmatized property, I mean, I'm not attached to that definition either. So is there any specific, what was the thought behind that, if you can recall?
Well, stigmatized property on Guam, people do ask about it. I mean, granted, you know, he's an attorney, he's not out there selling real estate all day. So I know there's a lot of Realtors who have been approached. I know properties that have sat for years because there was a death there, a suicide. We're not talking about natural death, we're talking about murder or suicide. So there is, there is a sense of stigmatism, stigmatism when it comes to people's perception of whether or not they want to buy property. So once again, if he wants to, to reduce it or narrow it and put a timeframe on it, that's fine. But, you know, on Guam, there's a lot of Asian buyers. And Asians are very concerned about stigma. I mean, almost every Asian I deal with, one of the first questions they ask, anyone die here? So they're a big part of the buying community here. So I think it's an appropriate concept to have in there. If it needs to be defined or limited more, then I'm okay with that. But I don't think we should just whitewash the whole stigmatized issue.
Okay, and then regards to like drug activity, what is your take on that for drug activity? Or proximity to registered sex offenders in the stigmatized property?
You know, I know across the country, people are nervous when they know they're moving into, you know, a house with two doors down, there's a sex offender on it. If I had a child, my natural reaction would be concerned about that. So I'm open to that, you know. If that's the one issue that's going to prevent the bill from going through, then, then fine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Chris. Thank you. Okay, so I would like to open the floor to my colleagues for questions. Senator Telo?
And thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. And thank you, Attorney Johnson, for being here and providing the good information, as well as yourself. Mr. Murphy, it's always good to see you. I saw your article in 2000, I think it was September of 2019 regarding this particular concern and the potential on this bill. Great photo, by the way, that they used in that article. Just a little thing there. But anyways, you know, and I appreciate you working with the good chairman of, on this legislation. You know, I remember, yes, the testimony that we had on this particular bill last year, and I'd like to see this move through because I think it's very important for everybody. And what you said earlier was important, people save a lot of money. That's the biggest investment an individual makes is a home. And then, you know, you pump everything into that. And then to come to find out that, you know, you have to fork out another 40 grand or 30 grand, you know, it becomes disheartening. And, you know, it reminds me, I love to watch like Property Brothers or Fixer Upper, you know, on the home TV programs. And you always see them come across issues where, you know, this had asbestos, this home, and they didn't do it. Now it's going to have to cost them additional. Or the electrical wiring was all faulty and it won't cast mustard, you know, on any kind of renovations or even a new home. So this bill is very important, and I think it's very needed. And Attorney Johnson, you mentioned that the bill was probably the molding of different legislations from other states and put together. And it's obvious that you did your homework on this and you looked at other states. So what do you recommend on a type of model legislation from another particular state? And of course, keep in mind, you know, Guam is different, we're an island. You know, we're not in the middle of South Dakota or something like that. But what law would you recommend to follow after an example?
I think, I think it was a good idea to look at the Hawaii law. Generally, when, generally when you're drafting laws on Guam and you're trying to adopt laws from other jurisdictions, it's a good idea first to look at California law. Because if you recall, Guam law, especially from the 50s, was adopted originally from California. So most of Guam's laws haven't changed a lot since the 1950s, whereas California's laws have changed a considerable amount. So we can always look to California law to see what changes they made and what lawsuits resulted as a result of those changes to see how those changes worked, what changes those were, and how successful those changes were. But I think the Hawaii law was actually a really good jurisdiction to look through. Adding the Pennsylvania law, I thought was a little superfluous. All we just really needed to look at was one jurisdiction. Because, and I've seen this before in other Guam laws, it becomes troublesome when you add laws from different jurisdictions. And it makes it much easier for courts to interpret those laws if it's clear where that law comes from. But if the law comes from, incorporate sections from different jurisdictions, it becomes much more difficult to try to look to decisions made in other states in order to interpret how the Guam law should be interpreted. But I think the Hawaii law was a good place to go through. I think it would be a good one to borrow from. But again, even in Hawaii, they have material fact means. And I think it would be good if the Guam Legislature were to simply point out what issues they feel are important to be disclosed. And I know the law can always be adjusted in later years in order to include additional things that must be disclosed as a requirement by sellers. That doesn't mean that we're going to pass the law now and it's going to be, absolutely have to stay exactly that is the way that it is for years to come.
Thank you so much for that, yeah. Oh, no, I'm sorry, did interrupt. Go ahead. If there's something else you wanted to add?
Oh, I would just, I'd like to add that, Senator. With respect to the law, it also included a proposed form. So, you know, the legislature could take a look at that form because that outlined all the issues that we felt were appropriate to disclose. And that was, I think that was three and a half pages. So that would be very specific in terms of what Marsas is indicating that if you want to really define, that's the starting point because it outlines specific things over three and a half pages.
If the point is to protect buyers from sellers who may be hiding things, then it's really, really much better to have a specific list of things that they must disclose. Because having something like this definition for material fact, which is really a very, very drawn out legal term and legal definition, not a lot of people are going to be able to understand that very well. Especially, I mean, I grew up here, I know there are a lot of people on Guam who don't speak English as a first language. So if you provide them with a list, it's much easier for them to follow a list of specific things to look at rather than interpret some very convoluted legalese.
Hey, thank you for that. Because you did mention earlier that, you know, it's not good to take two different laws and mesh them together, you know, from different states. But here, you know, it's obvious, I guess what you're trying to say is that it's not really that. It's about, you know, explaining it in detail. You know, if you're going to take it from one other state, you know, be specific on what the intent was and the definition. I got that. Thank you so much for that. You know, you talked about earlier about any paranormal situation on Guam. And, you know, I mean, when selling a house. And, you know, on Guam, you know, we have these tautamonas, like in the islands, you know, we have certain things like that. And, you know, I guess, I guess we could just go with the, maybe we should put in the legislation, something that you made a comment to, Mr. Murphy, in your ad, in your paper. You said, the more you, what was it? I think it was like, the more you expose, the better, the safer you are. I think it was, yeah. The more that, the more that you reveal, the safer you are. And I guess that's the whole premise on this legislation, you know. And, but I appreciate it again, Attorney Johnson, for your insight on this. And I look forward to working with the author of the bill. I'm a co-sponsor, is that to do my due diligence as well to really finalize this thing. And I hope your door is open to us to come to your, knocking on your door, as well as Chris Murphy working together on, on making this a solid piece of legislation for the protection of all those buyers. And especially those first time buyers, these young couples buying their home for the first time, you know, helping them out. Like yourself, Mr. Johnson. The young kids. So thank you so much, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. Looking forward to moving forward on the legislation once we've had our roundtable and discuss this further. Thank you.
This is Massey, Senator Taitikui. Yes, I am looking forward to the markup meeting for this bill, definitely. All right, so I'd like to recognize Senator Tony Ada, if he has any comments or questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I see the importance of this legislation. You know, several terms back during I introduced the salvage vehicle title. And it just goes to show that, yes, there's a lot of honest people out there, but there are also scrupulous people out there. And when, you know, previously when you bought a used car, it was buyer beware. People will buy a junk vehicle that was salvaged by the insurance company. You turn around and you think it was the best vehicle that there was because it was reasonably priced and it looked good. So you purchased it for your daughter or your son, your child. And they get into that vehicle not knowing that it was a salvage vehicle. They get into an accident, the airbags didn't deploy, the frame crushed, and all that was not disclosed. So I introduced that salvage title vehicle to ensure that when a vehicle was in a salvage accident, that the title will be stamped salvage vehicle. And that would protect the buyers. And then that became buyer beware. You know, it's a salvage vehicle. If you're going to purchase it, then, you know, that's on you. I look at this legislation as the same thing. We need to protect our buyers. We need to protect our people that, who are going to buy a home for their children or they're, you know, they're buying a home for themselves, whatever it may be. That issues are disclosed, that whatever happened in the home, whether the roof is cracked or a car came crashing through, that these things are disclosed and that the buyer knows what's going on. I hope that Attorney Johnson will be able to work with you, Madam Chair, the sponsor and the co-sponsor, along with Mr. Murphy, to improve this legislation and make it better so that we can have something in place to protect the buyers. Because something to protect them is better than nothing at all. And I thank you, Madam Chair, for introducing this. And I look forward for it to being placed on the session floor, and I look forward to voting on it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
This is Massey, Senator Ada, for that great analogy and for your support. Senator Joanne Brown, if you have any questions or comments for the panel here?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. More so comment, I mean, I've added the word stigmatized property to my vocabulary. I've never quite heard that word, but, you know, I'm always thinking, oh, my goodness, imagine buying a house and you have an unexpected spirit in it. But, you know, culturally, I mean, we've grown up on Guam with that reality, and that's something even myself. I'm very conscious of space and where I'm in and how I feel in it. And is anyone going to surprise me that I'm not expecting? So understandably culturally, a lot of our people, you know, still look and think about that. And they know when they have bad energy and good energy on a property. But aside from that, I very much am supportive of this legislation. I recognize as a result of this hearing, and I certainly, you know, appreciate Attorney Johnson providing input. I'm sure a lot of thought went into his presentation, as well as Mr. Murphy's been very active many, 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 many years of real estate on Guam and bringing his expertise to the table. Of course, when you buy a piece of property or you buy a home, probably 90% of the people that are doing that, that is their single largest investment that they're going to make in their life. And probably more than likely, they put as much on the table in a down payment or in terms of how much they could finance through the bank to be able to purchase that home. And certainly having them be advised of issues with the structure or what has occurred in the past or what the surrounding uses of that property may have been, I think are all very good things. Because not everyone's going to know that. I mean, unless you've lived in a neighborhood for many years, you probably wouldn't know that. And in all fairness, I mean, if people are going to pay good money, I think there should be an expectation that they're getting a good product. In this case, maybe it's the real estate, it's the house, it's a building they may be purchasing. You know, there's a lot more to gain from that for our consumers than to lose. So I just wanted to relay that I'm sure once the details get refined a little better so that it's more user friendly for our community here and meets legal muster, I certainly would be very supportive of this legislation. And I certainly also appreciate the input from Senator Ada with regards to talking about his previous legislation on vehicles. You know, you're right, there's a lot of good people, honest people out there that intend well and are providing a good product, but there's also those that are not, and they're trying to make a quick buck at the expense of somebody else's hard labor. And I think most of us will agree, that's not something we see and find acceptable. So I certainly am very supportive. Thank you very much to both you, Madam Chair, and Senator Telo for introducing this. And I certainly be happy to be a co-sponsor and vote for this bill once we've worked out the details. Thank you very much. I think it's very good legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Absolutely. Yeah, I definitely would like to invite you to be a co-sponsor, as well as Senator Ada, if he wishes to join as well, once we get this legislation adjusted. Chris Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Will.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just one other thing in light of what Senator Ada said. I would say at least 40%, I mean, 90% of all residential purchase agreements on the condition portion of that document, the first line, property is being sold as is. So this is something that people just automatically, you know, say, I'm protecting myself. It's up to you to do all your due diligence, but this is what you're getting. So it just becomes so run-of-the-mill that people just accept it and they go through it. And then it poses problems down the road when something pops up. So it's exactly like, you know, start off with the car thing, buyer beware, you know. And it's going into a huge, a much larger asset now. And people are just taking that concept for granted, thinking that they're wiping their hands of any responsibility. And so I just think that that responsibility has to be shifted over to reasonableness on terms of the sellers.
Thank you so much, Chris. And yes, this is definitely a lot of work you put into this. So we'll definitely see this through, right? All right, so next, I would like to recognize Senator Duaneus.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I think it's been an excellent dialogue. I'm certain that this legislation is necessary, and I thank you for introducing it. I have one question, and to Attorney Johnson, thank you for recognizing all those issues as well and allowing the committee. I know the chairwoman will certainly move forward and make the necessary changes and work with yourself as well as Chris Murphy to improve this legislation and make it tailored for Guam. Chris, of course, I'm partial to you because you have a really great name. But I have a question. Are you here in any capacity representing GAR at all, the Guam Association of Realtors?
Actually, over the last couple, this has been a couple of years in the making. So we've gone back and forth with GAR. And in the last public hearing that Madam Chair held, GAR was there in support. So a lot of this has been back and forth dialogued with GAR, and GAR's in favor. We wanted to make sure all the stakeholders and all the major players involved, you know, had input into it so that when we presented it to you folks, you know, we sort of had a consensus of the professionals and what they felt.
That's great news, Chris. I know that they have a legislative representative. So perhaps, Madam Chair, when we do the markup on this and maybe even another roundtable just to make sure that, once again, additional input to make the bill the best product it could be going to the floor, if you're open to that, you know, pull them in. And Attorney Johnson, I think you've been very generous and will be generous with your time to assist us on this important legislation and to tailor it for Guam. So Madam Chair, those are really all my comments. And I also look forward to supporting this legislation once the committee work has been done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Senator Duaneus. Absolutely. I think this is the second time we had a public hearing on this bill, and they were in support of the bill. But being that there are going to be changes, we'd definitely include them in the process to assure that there are any kind of questions that they have and concerns. So being that there are no more, no more others to testify, I guess I'll close on this. So basically, this bill seeks to create and mandate a seller's disclosure statement presented to potential home buyers. And by mandating this to law, it aims to protect our home buyers from unforeseen problems and costs and create a fair real estate market and more transparent purchasing process for residential home buyers. And with this current state of our island, every penny in our pocket- And with this current state of our island, every penny penny in our pocket counts, and unforeseen circumstances affecting the struggle structural integrity of our home plumbing or electrical uh uh, infrastructure can be devastating to our potential home buyers. And this bill would satisfy the need for transparency and would help to create a level playing field within the real estate market and help protect one of the most important investments of for our home, our families. And definitely we'll we we'll reach out to um Attorney Johnson, as well as Chairman Murphy and the real estate industry and anyone else who is interested to address some of the concerns of this draft, and we'll look forward to working with you all uh to get the best possible uh legislation in place. So it's to do with Mossy for all your time, uh, senators and those in the panels, Attorney Brown, who's our Attorney Johnson and Chairman Murphy for being here and for all your hard work. Uh, so at this time, we are going to recess, the committee will recess until one P M uh to pick up uh with a nomination hearing as well as a public hearing for two procurement bills. So thank you for your time and um, have a great day. Do us Mossy.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Johnson.